Okay, just so for those who didn't hear what we were saying. So good evening to everyone once again in here and online. This is City Council. Roger please.
Thank you Lord Provost. City councillors, ladies and gentlemen, there are two items of business this evening.
Just so for those who didn't hear what we were saying.
Firstly, the minutes for information and record purposes. Please note with reference to the minute of meeting of the planning committee of 19th May, Bailey McPherson advised that he was a member of the Friends of Magdalen Green but had not discussed the relative application with them. With apologies to Bailey McPherson, a suitable amendment to the minute will be made. Thank you Lord Provost. The minutes having been agreed, we move to item two. Membership of standing committees, licensing board, local review body and outside bodies. A. Planning Committee Deputy Convenor. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as Deputy Convenor of the Planning Committee. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. Bailey Dawson wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
Bailey Dawson.
Thanks Lord Provost. Councillor Tolland.
Councillor Tolland, thank you. Any other nomination? Any questions? Is this agreed? It is agreed. Thank you. Roger.
B. Dundee City Licensing Board Member. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from the position as a member of Dundee City Licensing Board. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you. Roger. Bailey Dawson.
Councillor Black, please, Lord Provost.
Councillor Black, thank you Bailey Dawson. Any other nominations? Any questions? Is this agreed? I think that is agreed. Thank you. Roger please.
C. Licensing Committee Member. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the Licensing Committee. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you Bailey Dawson.
Councillor Black again, please.
Councillor Black again. Thank you very much. Any other nomination? Any questions? Is this agreed? Thank you. That's agreed. Roger.
D. D Local Review Body Member. D Local Review Body Member. D Local Review Body Member.
And I think the engagement between ourselves, the local authority, the officers and the general public with their groups
It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the local review body. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the local review body. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the local review body.
has been very much welcomed. And it's a key leadership role we've actually played with the climate challenge.
The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
So I think to complement what's been done here, I think it's a fantastic project in the phases it was put out
Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
Councillor Hunter, please. Councillor Hunter, please. Councillor Hunter, please.
Councillor Hunter, thank you. Councillor Hunter, thank you. Councillor Hunter, thank you.
and the number of organisations that have benefited from this to actually reduce their carbon footprint
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed?
has got to be recognised. And I say thanks to everyone involved and especially for those who were successful in their bids.
Thank you, that's agreed. Roger. Thank you, that's agreed. Roger. Thank you, that's agreed. Roger.
E Scrutiny Committee Member. E Scrutiny Committee Member. E Scrutiny Committee Member. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the scrutiny committee. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the scrutiny committee. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of the scrutiny committee.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. And I can see the third question is from Bailey Roberts about the roll call.
The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
Can I bring in Mr Many to explain these to Bailey Roberts?
Councillor Hunter, please. Councillor Hunter, please. Councillor Hunter, please.
Councillor Hunter. Councillor Hunter. Councillor Hunter. Any questions? Any other nominations? Any questions? Any other nominations? Any questions? Any other nominations?
Thank you, convener.
I swapped that round just for variety. I swapped that round just for variety. I swapped that round just for variety.
I think what has happened here is that my opening remarks were perhaps not heard by all those who were joining remotely.
Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? That's agreed. Thank you. Roger. That's agreed. Thank you. Roger. That's agreed. Thank you. Roger.
F Teyside Contracts Joint Committee Member. F Teyside Contracts Joint Committee Member. F Teyside Contracts Joint Committee Member. To confirm, in the case of the roll call procedure, to further reduce network traffic It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of Teyside Contracts Joint Committee. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of Teyside Contracts Joint Committee. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of Teyside Contracts Joint Committee. in the interests of the stability of the signal within the council chamber, we did not call the roll this evening. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The roll will be compiled from a process of visual observation of those who are in the chamber
Bailey Dawson. Bailey Dawson. Bailey Dawson.
Thanks, Lord Provost. Councillor Lynn. Thanks, Lord Provost. Councillor Lynn. Thanks, Lord Provost. Councillor Lynn.
and the people buttoned in teams.
Councillor Lynn. Any other nominations? Councillor Lynn. Any other nominations? Councillor Lynn. Any other nominations?
I confirm, Bailey Roberts, that your attendance has been duly noted. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Roger.
Thank you, Mr Many.
G Teyside Valuation Joint Board Member. G Teyside Valuation Joint Board Member. G Teyside Valuation Joint Board Member.
So I think the only thing I'd like to amend in this report is rather than noting it, we should be celebrating it.
It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of Teyside Valuation Joint Board. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of Teyside Valuation Joint Board. It is reported that Bailey Roberts has resigned from position as member of Teyside Valuation Joint Board.
And I hope that some of the later paragraphs got across some of the excitement, the variety of work that was undertaken.
The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
I really want to thank all the groups that participated and the hundreds of people who voted.
Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
Myself, please, Lord Provost. Myself, please, Lord Provost. Myself, please, Lord Provost.
But I think that's the business. Are people happy to note the report, if not celebrate it?
That's your good self. That's your good self. That's your good self. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Right. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger.
H Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Members. H Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Members. H Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Members. It is reported that members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment. It is reported that members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment. It is reported that members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment. The current members are councillors Lynn, councillor Tolland and councillor McHugh. The current members are councillors Lynn, councillor Tolland and councillor McHugh. The current members are councillors Lynn, councillor Tolland and councillor McHugh. The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments. The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments. The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson.
Thanks, Lord Provost, from the admin group councillors Lynn and Tolland.
And Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost. Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost. And Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost.
Councillors Lynn and councillor Tolland. Councillor McCarvin. Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson.
Thanks, Lord Provost. Nominate councillor McHugh.
Thanks, Lord Provost, from the admin group councillors Lynn and Tolland. Thanks, Lord Provost, from the admin group councillors Lynn and Tolland. Thanks, Lord Provost, from the admin group councillors Lynn and Tolland.
Councillor McHugh. Thank you all. Any other nominations? Councillors Lynn and councillor Tolland. Councillor McCarvin. Councillors Lynn and councillor Tolland. Councillor McCarvin. Councillors Lynn and councillor Tolland. Councillor McCarvin. Any questions?
Thanks, Lord Provost. Nominate councillor McHugh. Thanks, Lord Provost. Nominate councillor McHugh. Thanks, Lord Provost. Nominate councillor McHugh.
Is this agreed? Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Councillor McHugh. Councillor McHugh. Councillor McHugh. Thank you all. Any other nominations? Thank you all. Any other nominations? Thank you all. Any other nominations?
I Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Chair.
Any questions? Any questions? Any questions?
It is reported that councillor Lynn currently serves as chair of Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board,
Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Roger.
I Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Chair. I Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Chair. I Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Chair. with that being due for reappointment in October 2026. It is reported that councillor Lynn currently serves as chair of Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board, It is reported that councillor Lynn currently serves as chair of Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board, It is reported that councillor Lynn currently serves as chair of Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board, The council's instructions are requested with regard to appointment following the reappointment of the members in the item above. with that being due for reappointment in October 2026. with that being due for reappointment in October 2026. with that being due for reappointment in October 2026.
Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
State its whole councillor Lynn, please.
The council's instructions are requested with regard to appointment following the reappointment of the members in the item above. The council's instructions are requested with regard to appointment following the reappointment of the members in the item above. The council's instructions are requested with regard to appointment following the reappointment of the members in the item above.
Councillor Lynn, any other nominations? Any questions? Disagreed? Thank you. Roger. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
State its whole councillor Lynn, please. State its whole councillor Lynn, please. State its whole councillor Lynn, please.
J Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Proxy Members.
Councillor Lynn, any other nominations? Councillor Lynn, any other nominations? Councillor Lynn, any other nominations? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions?
It is reported that proxy members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment.
Disagreed? 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 Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger.
J Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Proxy Members. J Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Proxy Members. J Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board Proxy Members. The current proxy members are councillor Short, councillor Smith and Bailey Wright. It is reported that proxy members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment. It is reported that proxy members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment. It is reported that proxy members on the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board are due for reappointment. The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments. The current proxy members are councillor Short, councillor Smith and Bailey Wright. The current proxy members are councillor Short, councillor Smith and Bailey Wright. The current proxy members are councillor Short, councillor Smith and Bailey Wright. And Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost.
Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments. The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments. The council's instructions are requested with regard to these reappointments.
State its whole councillor Short and councillor Smith, please.
Councillor Short and Smith. Councillor McCarvin, please.
And Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost. And Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost. And Bailey Dawson and councillor McCarvin wish to speak, Lord Provost.
Bailey Wright. Thank you. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Thank you, Bailey Dawson.
State its whole councillor Short and councillor Smith, please. State its whole councillor Short and councillor Smith, please. State its whole councillor Short and councillor Smith, please.
Any other nominations? Councillor Short and Smith. Councillor McCarvin, please. Councillor Short and Smith. Councillor McCarvin, please. Councillor Short and Smith. Councillor McCarvin, please. Any questions? Is this agreed? Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Bailey Wright. Bailey Wright. Bailey Wright. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
A Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership, TACTRAN.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions?
It is reported that councillor McHugh has resigned from position as member of Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership.
Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Roger.
A Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership, TACTRAN. A Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership, TACTRAN. A Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership, TACTRAN. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. It is reported that councillor McHugh has resigned from position as member of Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership. It is reported that councillor McHugh has resigned from position as member of Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership. It is reported that councillor McHugh has resigned from position as member of Teyside and Central Scotland Transport Partnership. And councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
Thank you. Councillor McCarvin.
The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Councillor McCarvin. Any other nominations?
And councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost. And councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost. And councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
Any questions? Thank you. Councillor McCarvin. Thank you. Councillor McCarvin. Thank you. Councillor McCarvin. Councillor McCarvin. Any other nominations? 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 Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All right. All right. All right. All right. Can you say that again, your mic apart? Can you say that again, your mic apart? Can you say that again, your mic apart? Can you say that again, your mic apart?
Nominate myself, Lord Provost. Nominate myself, Lord Provost. Nominate myself, Lord Provost. Nominate myself, Lord Provost.
Councillor McCarvin. So any nominations or questions? 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 Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger. Thank you. Roger.
L Dundee Alcohol and Drugs Partnership. 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 It is reported that councillor Finnegan has resigned from position as member of Dundee Alcohol and Drugs Partnership. It is reported that councillor Finnegan has resigned from position as member of Dundee Alcohol and Drugs Partnership. It is reported that councillor Finnegan has resigned from position as member of Dundee Alcohol and Drugs Partnership. It is reported that councillor Finnegan has resigned from position as member of Dundee Alcohol and Drugs Partnership. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. And again, councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost. And again, councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost. And again, councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost. And again, councillor McCarvin wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
Thank you again, Roger. Councillor McCarvin, please. Thank you again, Roger. Councillor McCarvin, please. Thank you again, Roger. Councillor McCarvin, please. Thank you again, Roger. Councillor McCarvin, please.
Nominate Bailey Wright. Nominate Bailey Wright. Nominate Bailey Wright. Nominate Bailey Wright.
Bailey Wright. Nominations Bailey Wright? 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 Any questions, nominations? Any questions, nominations? Any questions, nominations? Any questions, nominations? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Is this agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And that includes the business, Lord Provost. And that includes the business, Lord Provost. And that includes the business, Lord Provost. And that includes the business, Lord Provost.
Okay, thank you everyone for your patience. Thank you. Okay, thank you everyone for your patience. Thank you. Okay, thank you everyone for your patience. Thank you. Okay, thank you everyone for your patience. Thank you.
Mr. Many to explain these to Bailey Roberts.
Thank you, convener. I think what has happened here is that my opening remarks were perhaps not heard by all those who were joining remotely. To confirm, in the case of the roll call procedure, to further reduce network traffic in the interests of the stability of the signal within the council chamber, we did not call the roll this evening. The roll will be compiled from a process of visual observation of those who are in the chamber and the people buttoned in teams. I confirm, Bailey Roberts, that your attendance has been duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Many. And so I think the only thing I'd like to amend in this report is rather than noting it, we should be celebrating it. And I hope that some of the later paragraphs got across some of the excitement, the variety of work that was undertaken. I really want to thank all the groups that participated and the hundreds of people who voted. But I think that's the business. Are people happy to note the report, if not celebrate it? Right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Fair Work Economic Board on Infrastructure Committee. First item, please Veronica.
Thank you, convener. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
I'll just leave a minute in case someone wants to declare anything.
Okay.
I don't see anything. Thank you.
Item number two, Brook Street Brody Ferry Variation of Bus Coach Base Order 2025. This item has been withdrawn.
Hey, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item three, Dundee City Council, Rudgeyards Road Dundee, Stopping Up Order 2025. This is for your approval.
So this item seeks approval to promote a stopping of order of Rudgeyards Road to facilitate redevelopment of the adjoining land. Uh, councillor Duncan, you've got a question?
Yeah, thanks, convener. I was just wondering, is there an explanation as to why that item two was withdrawn?
Thanks, councillor Duncan. Uh, Mr. Many?
Thank you, convener. I confirm that I'll send a separate explanatory memorandum to all elected members to explain these for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Duncan, Mr. Many. Uh, next item, please Veronica. Well, I'm assuming, uh, sorry, that that can be approved, item three. Don't see any other comments. Okay, I'll take that as approval. Thank you.
Item four, Dundee Place Sufficiency Assessment. This report is for your approval.
So this report seeks approval of the place sufficiency assessment, which supports the review of the Dundee local development plan. The document provides an assessment of play opportunities across the city that's been developed uh with the involvement of arrangements stakeholders, including children, young people, parents and carers. Uh, and I actually think this is an excellent document and it's something that's very necessary that we have a good baseline for understanding what resources we have, what green spaces and play spaces we have, both private and public. I think it's very useful that it highlights both the positive and negatives in every single ward. Um. Councillor, uh, sorry, councillor Coleman, you've got the first question. Sorry, councillor Shears. So I'm just looking at the screen. Uh, but yeah, councillor Shears, thank you.
Thanks very much. Um, I've got a couple of questions if you'll indulge me. And the first one is regarding the accessibility of Dundee's parks. And when I asked a question here a few months ago, and we were told there would be accessible equipment in every park, so I'm just looking for an update on how that's going. And my second question is in regard to the private parks and that some of us have in our wards. Certainly in my wards, some of the private parks are horrendously maintained. We have absolutely no scope on getting them maintained. So I'm just wondering if there's anything as a council, any powers that we have that could force these developers and to fix these parks? And if not, is there any scope or method that we can take these parks into ownership? And give people the parks that they deserve rather than having run down broken equipment sitting in the middle of where they live? Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Shears. Uh, I'll pass over to Catherine Conroy, councillor's questions for you. Catherine?
Thanks, convener, and thanks for the question, councillor Shear. So, um, in relation to the first question about accessible inclusive play, um, I can confirm that we do strive to include as much of this equipment in our parks as possible. And, you know, the, the installed elements range from sensory play, panels, basket swings, uh, flush roundabouts, things like that, which, um, do, do add to the, um, equipment that's already in the parks. There's no specific standard or classification for an inclusive piece of equipment. So for example, one type of equipment might be inclusive to one disability but not for another. So the answer is just to provide a variety, a mix of play in all our areas, and that's what we do try to do. And, yes. Um, in relation to your second question, um, I do appreciate your frustration in relation to private, um, parks, um, but I'll maybe pass that back to my city development colleagues for further comment. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Catherine. I'll just, uh, bring in, uh, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, convener. I think we recognise that there are a number of play areas across the city that have been provided by developers as part of housing development proposals. And the responsibility for maintaining those areas rests with the company and is often paid for by, uh, the purchasers of homes within those developments. We've checked on a number of, uh, the situations across the city, often in response to complaints and whilst in many situations, the council has no powers of enforcement, it may be that the homeowners themselves may have powers within their deeds that they would be able to follow up on. But that is something that they would need to seek their own independent legal advice on.
Thanks very much, Catherine. Does that answer your question, councillor Shears? That's great, thank you. Uh, councillor Duncan, next please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just really to add weight to what councillor Shears has just said about the certain private play parks, uh, which have been the bane of my life for several years in my ward in, in, in Brody Ferry, specifically Sandy Park and the park on, uh, Lawyer's Drive. And really, it's too bad that, you know, when these developments went through many a year ago, that tougher conditions were not actually imposed upon developers before they just rode off into the sunset, leaving people for years, which are the way years afterwards to try and chase private companies who, let's, let's be honest, are, you know, have shown themselves less than keen to engage or take responsibility for the, the play parks that they actually own. And actually in Lawyer's Drive, the people there have been deprived access to the play park for several years now. Now, I do accept it's not the council's direct responsibility. I have asked years ago, which is the way if the council would adopt these things and was told no. But I would reiterate a plea that I've made on several occasions to officers. Can this council not try its level best to actually get a hold of these owners, whoever they may be? And actually do what we can to compel them to carry out whatever duties they're supposed to be carrying out but failing to do?
Thanks for that, councillor Duncan. Uh, yeah, I think, as I said previously, I think the usefulness of this exercise is that we now know the condition of parks, private parks and public parks across the city. And I appreciate you saying you're familiar with the state of Sandy Park and the Lawyer's Drive Park. But maybe bring in Catherine again, just to double check in terms of that enforceability.
Thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Duncan. I'll maybe just hand that back to city development colleagues again for further.
Okay.
Apologies, convener. We do regularly, uh, discuss with colleagues in legal just to confirm the council's position in relation to these private parks. And as things stand, I think any enforcement maybe, uh, I would repeat, it rests with the homeowners in the surrounding areas, perhaps through their, uh, their title deeds.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Hamilton. Um, councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Convina. Um, on page twenty, there are four indicates between twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six to date. The council has received one million four hundred and sixty-four thousand pounds of funding from the Scottish government for the renewal of play parks. During this time, thirty play parks have been improved using this funding, which equates to forty-five and a half percent of the total number of play parks in Dundee. Given that the Scottish government commitment was to upgrade every play pack of Scotland within this parliamentary term, can I please ask if officers have raised with the Scottish government the need for the extra funding to upgrade the remaining fifty-four and a half percent of play packs across our city?
Apologies, councillor Coleman, you cut off a little bit at the end, but my understanding is you're asking us to raise the Scottish government for additional money for play park upgrades, is that correct?
Not quite at this stage. I was asking if officers have raised with the Scottish government the need for extra funding. Have the officers raised that need at this moment?
I will ask that for you. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Coleman for the question. I confirm that we haven't yet, as yet, asked for additional funding as we're still within, um, uh, the programme that, for the monies that we've already received. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Catherine. Uh, does that answer your question, councillor Coleman?
Uh, yes, I, I, I will have an amendment then in that case, please, Mr. Convina, which I'd like to move at the appropriate moment. Thank you.
Okay, that's noted. Thank you. Uh, councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. The play framework referenced on page six of the report sets out eight priorities for play in the community. I'd like to highlight two of these. The priorities are not numbered, but the third of these says that improved provision and distribution of play spaces and equipment should be prioritised to the areas of greatest need. The seventh priority says that looked after children, now care experienced children, and children with complex and additional support needs should be prioritised in line with the GAFAC approach. So here's the thing. The twenty twenty-two poverty profile for Dundee, also referenced in this report, tells it, tells us that seventy-nine point seven percent of children in the East End Ward, aged between naught to fifteen years, live within the twenty percent most deprived data zones in Scotland. That's eight out of ten children. This compares to forty-three point eight percent across the city as a whole. The number of children and young people per play park is four hundred and sixty-five in the East End Ward, the lowest level of play spaces relative to population across the city. This compares to two hundred and twenty-eight children and young people per play park in the Coalside Ward. It's little wonder then that the East End Ward received the lowest average rating for play quality at two point two four out of a maximum score of five. The only possible conclusion from this data is that children and young people of the East End Ward, despite living in the most disadvantaged area of the city, are being shortchanged and they deserve so much better. Too often, we identify and recognise where we need to target our resources. And too often, we fail to put our money where our mouth is. We fail the very communities whose need is greatest by not acting on the data and not delivering much needed resource to the right place. So my question is, my ask is for an assurance and a commitment that the priorities identified in this evidence report will translate into a set of targeted deliverables for the children and young people of the East End Ward. And targeted deliverables when, where accessibility and inclusivity is designed into every new project to enhance play spaces at the earliest stage rather than as an add-on afterthought. I would appreciate officers' comments.
Thank you very much, councillor McHugh. And as I said earlier, I think this is a very useful report that highlights both the bad and good intent of provision. There is something positive and something negative to be highlighted in every single ward. And completely take your point. Uh, similarly, my ward of the North East has got significant areas of deprivation. And it's just need a massive investment in the new play park at, at Long Hall, which had the privilege of going to open recently. But I'll pass across to Catherine Conroy regarding your points about investment.
Thank you, convener, and thank you for your, um, your comments, councillor McHugh. So just like to firstly comment that the ongoing play proposals have been informed by extensive engagement with children and families at locations across Dundee. Um, again, as well with ongoing analysis, analysis from the place efficiency assessment process. So this has been developed with planning and community officers, um, and also through online and in-person community events and play parks, schools and nurseries, as well as discussing play priorities with families at specialist play facilities for disabled children. So consideration has also been given, um, looking at the condition of play equipment citywide, as well as an analysis, analysis of historic investment in play parks to date. And just to ensure that spend is distributed equitably and in the areas of greatest need. So I would just like to, um, update you on the substantial investment that has gone on in the East End over the years. And I've just pointed out a few parks, like Ben Lathan Park and Douglas Community Park. And the Green Dykes kickback area. Also, um, I can confirm that um, we've recently installed muggas at Douglas Community Park as well. Um, and I can, and Pitcaro Park was a, a brand new play area too, that was, um, we consulted heavily with the community on. Um, just to update you that Petralley Park is due to be upgraded this financial year as well. And but I do fully take on board your comments about making sure that any future funding is directed to those children, um, in greatest need within our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine, and I hope that's reassuring for you, councillor McHugh.
Uh, yes, we talk about equitable provision, um, and I would really like to see that in reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, um, councillor. And just to say, I find this report really useful. Um, councillor McHugh will not be unsurprised to find out that the first thing that I did was make a grid with every ward and the number of play parks and the number of children. So I think that information, as she says, gives us very good information about where resources have to be directed. And so I think it's very, very useful for future planning. And I also was wanting to ask, um, if the information in this report can be incorporated into the biodiversity ward maps? Because we did a big, a lot of work on ensuring that every council had access to information about where they had biodiversity outlets in their wards, and it would be good if we could include this information onto those maps. And I don't know if Catherine can explain whether that's possible or not, but just welcome the report. It was really useful to read and will help us with future planning.
Thanks very much, councillor Anderson. I couldn't agree more. Uh, Catherine?
Thank you, convener, and thank you councillor Anderson. I confirm that we'll take that away and look at that with, um, the green space team. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll bring councillor Elnack then for a question, and I'll move to councillor Coleman and councillor Creighton for the amendment. Councillor Elnack?
Thanks. Just looking at some of the comments from children, um, around them maybe being an issue with older teenagers at the park and also talking a little bit about vandalism within the report. Have we identified that there's an antisocial behaviour problem at our parks? Are we doing anything with antisocial behaviour team to manage that at all? Um, it would just be good to get an update, if not right now, but maybe just over an email if it's, the information is not available.
Thank you, councillor Elnack. Uh, Catherine?
Thank you, convener, and thank you councillor Elnack. Um, we do work closely with our antisocial behaviour team. I would say that antisocial behaviour is difficult to design out, but where we can, we do try to put robust materials in place to, to avoid that and be happy to provide you with more detail off table. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just a question for the officers with regards to the assessment of the play parks themselves. Obviously, when you do the assessment, it's a one-off at that particular time. Can you just confirm for the gas of the funding, how that fund is distributed, that you're actually doing ongoing assessments around the city? Or is it six monthly, yearly, or just as is required? So I think spending the money is really important. The one point four million that we've received from the government is really welcome for the city and has benefited a number of play parks. And you've also ca- uh, calculated that there's other play parks probably not in need of any work to be done to them. I just want to be by clarity on the, understanding the process of how this money is actually distributed for the benefit of the people and the kids and that and the world.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. Uh, Catherine?
Thank you, convener, and thank you for your question, councillor Flynn. So I confirm that our play areas are regularly, regularly inspected and audited um, by, um, trained staff throughout the year. Um, and then this information is used to just inform further, um, potential projects across the city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Catherine. Anything further, councillor Flynn?
Sorry, let's just come back in. Is it ongoing assessments of the costs of any repairs that might need to be done? Uh, bearing in mind that we might be talking about funding here, that, uh, have you got a value of what we actually need to actually bring all the other play parks up to a reasonable standard if they need to be brought up to that standard?
Um, thank you for your further question. I don't have that information to hand, but I'm happy to provide that for you on table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll move back to yourself, councillor Coleman, if you want to speak to your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Convina, and I'd be grateful if my amendment could be circulated by committee services as appropriate. And indeed, it does allow to fan talk for as far as this report, as I actually find it quite helpful to do. Um, my motion is self-explanatory, and I do hope that cross-patric consensus will be even retrieved on this, as I'm sure we all want to see every one of Dundee's play packs to be upgraded. As we know, as we've spoken about, thirty play packs have been improved, but this means fifty-four and a half percent of our play packs have not been at this moment in time after the funding we have received. The commitment from the Scottish government in twenty twenty-one was for all play packs to be upgraded. So I think it would be prudent to write to the Scottish government to ask when we can expect the remaining funding as not long as now left in the parliamentary term. The upgrades thus far are to indeed be welcomed and, and indeed, there have been some of my old ward of Strathmartin. However, I think it is right that we see all play packs upgraded across the city. Indeed, of the eight city wards, only two wards received more than half marks by the surveys, uh, survey respondents. And if we look at page seventy-five, ten degrees D, near the coal side in North East. Um, that suggests that there's still very much work to be done. And I hope, convener, that you will agree with, uh, my amendment this evening and instruct the chief executive to write to the Scottish government as the amendment has outlined. I believe councillor Creighton will second.
Thanks very much, councillor Coleman. Uh, yeah, it's to just to reiterate, you know, I'm very grateful to the Scottish government for the support we've had thus far and, you know, the, the department has had a programme of improvements across the city targeting uh, those in need and making those upgrades, uh, as and, uh, when practical. But I'm perfectly comfortable to accept your amendment and hopefully we can get unanimity across the chamber for that. Uh, but I'll bring in councillor Creighton just to formal second.
Yep, thank you, convener. Um, yeah, it's the second councillor Coleman. Um, it's really important that all our cities' play parks are upgraded, so absolute clarity from the Scottish government on the funding to achieve this is vital. Um, I, like, like yourself, I hope we can, um, be unanimous on this one. Um, and, um, yeah, the money was promised, so let's hope we can see it. So I'm more happy to second councillor Coleman.
Yeah, there, there were some sound issues with that, but I'm grateful for your formal seconding. Can I maybe just confirm with Mr. Many in terms of the amendment, if he's happy, given that there isn't actually a, a value in it, or we come to whether that's an amendment we can, uh, get behind?
You know, as I understand the position, the committee unanimously agrees to the terms of the amendment, that would be reflected in the minute of the meeting. I notice, however, that Bailey McPherson wishes to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Many. Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, I think it's only a letter asking for more funding, to be honest. I don't think that, you know, Mr. Many confirmed to me in the view of officers, it was competent. And I'm, I'm grateful for your comments, convener. I think it's vitally important. This isn't a party issue. I think we all want to see all our play parks, um, across the city brought up to standard as soon as possible. Uh, you know, with twenty-first century equipment that children nowadays want to use. And, um, so I think that it's, it's a helpful step forward to, to write to the Minister for Children, Young People and the Promise and to seek that clarity. I just want to come back though very briefly on the issue that, uh, councillor Duncan and councillor Shears raised about private play parks. And I just simply make the point that I think there's a need, I don't think it's just good enough to say uh, owners should weigh off and check their title deeds. I, I, I know for a fact that in the case of certain, uh, because I've spoken with councillor Duncan about that, about, uh, the situation in his own ward, and that owners have done that. But there are no further forward. And I think bearing in mind that these developments were built as a result of planning decisions. Planning decisions, no doubt, involving elected members who are no longer, uh, members of this council, but nonetheless, planning decisions of this council. I think there's a need for a bit of a more proactive approach really from the council in assisting owners. It's a crying shame where you've got an area and, uh, councillor Duncan alluded to, for example, Pamirfield, where you've got large numbers of young families with children and a play park that's sat empty, overgrown and neglected for years. And I think really, I think whilst I fully understand there's no legal responsibility on the part of the council, I simply leave the thought that there's a real need for a proactive approach of officers helping where they can to assist the elected members in these areas to try to progress these issues with the owners. Uh, thank you, convener.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Can I just ask, committee services, take down that amendment? Uh, and given that we don't have any, uh, alternatives and given, I'm quite happy to move that, I think we can take that as accepted. Yep. Okay, thank you. Next item, please Veronica.
Item five, disabled persons parking places. This.
Apologies.
This report is for approval.
So this item provides an update on disabled bay installations and removals over the last twelve months and requests approval to vary the relevant traffic regulation order to confirm these changes. Uh, any questions or comments on this item? No, can this be, oh, sorry, um, so councillor Flynn first? Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Could I ask the officers, convener, to explain or provide an explanation in an email to all elected members of the processes and the number of disabled bays that can be permitted in any particular area? Because there's some areas in the ward where I'm getting questioned by constituents that there seems to be an, an overabundance and some aren't actually used. So I think a proper, full understanding of the allocation would be helpful.
That's councillor Flynn. I imagine that's perfectly fine, but Mr. McNorton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. The policy positions published on the website. Um, it allocates up to thirty percent of curb size space available in a street to disabled bays. With regard to, uh, redundant disabled bays or disabled bays where the applicant is no longer required. Um, if we receive information in from either residents of the street or preferably, um, the disabled, the blue badge holder who no longer requires the bay, uh, we will move to remove it. There is sometimes a lag period between that being, uh, processed in the order and the removal of the lining.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Does that answer your question, councillor? Thank you. Uh, councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. Can I ask, um, if there is a formal policy or process on the provision of disabled persons parking spaces outside public buildings? Libraries, community centres, Dundee House, for example.
Thanks, councillor McHugh. Uh, Mr. McDonald again?
Thank you, convener. I can confirm that the Disabled Persons Parking Place Act only applies to residents. Um, it doesn't apply to, uh, public roads in respect of, um, community facilities.
Thanks, Mr. McNorton. Uh, councillor Black, did you have a question? No, okay, you're fine. Um, given those questions, can this item be approved? Thank you. Uh, next item, please Veronica.
Item six, tenders received by head of design and property. These tenders are for your approval.
So it's item seeking approval to accept a tender with the value of one point seven five million pounds for the replacement of water tanks, pumps and controls at the four multi-story blocks of flats at the Dalfield Development in Hilltown. Are there any questions on item six? I don't see any. Can this be approved? Thank you. I'll take that as approval.
Thank you. Item seven, sourcing strategies by head of sustainable transport and roads. This report is for your approval.
So this item seeks approval to commence a procurement exercise for public and schoolwork services in Dundee and procure public transport software on behalf of Dundee, Angus and Perthicton Ross councils. Are there any questions or queries on this item? No? Can this be approved? Thank you. Next item, please.
Item eight, T Cities Region Deal. Update on reshaping the deal process. This report is for noting.
This report updates the committee on the T Cities Region Deal. In those, significant progress has been made in the first five years of the deal, including projects in Dundee such as the Cyber Quarter at the University of Aberdeen and the biomedical cluster development at the University of Dundee. The report also updates committee on the reshaping work that's currently being undertaken to ensure this progress is maintained during the second half of the deal programme. Uh, councillor Creighton, please.
Thank you, convener. Um, progress with the T Cities Innovation Hub at technical is good news and the hub has a finished feel about it and, uh, but can I get a bit clarity about the re- remainder of the technical and specifically the non-developed area of the North S and North W, sorry, North East and North End of the technical site near Blackness Road? It has been recently raised at West End Community Council that play facilities for children near the part of Blackness Road are lacking. And a play park there would be open for the community. Uh, I realise this part of project is earmarked for the biomedical cluster. I realise this part of the object is earmarked for the biomedical cluster, but can I have assurance that this site will be utilised in the near future and not sit underdeveloped for years to come like that has already been done?
Thank you, councillor Crichton. There was some issues with sound in the chamber. Certainly I had a little bit bothered, but I just wonder whether Mr. Presswood, Mr. Hamilton, can answer that for you?
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, councillor Crichton. We will pick that up separately with you, if that's okay, councillor Crichton. We were struggling to hear some of the points that you made. I think the gist of it may have been whether the deal could be used to fund a replacement of play equipment. And I think my initial reaction is that the deal is for strategic economic growth initiatives rather than important community facilities. So we're very happy to check that with the Scottish Government colleagues, but I think my instinct is no. There was something, I think, site-specific about a site potentially in your ward. But perhaps take up with your flying, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Presswood. I'm sure councillor Crichton will appreciate that. Thank you. Councillor Flynn, please.
Thanks, Convenor. My apologies, I probably should declare interest as the chair of T-Cities. If I can be noted, just to say, I really welcome the T-Cities Region Deal. This means it's really successful in its first period and the investment of what's mentioned in 4.3 of 155 million. But supporting 2,500 jobs is vitally important for the economy of the region and it's absolutely welcomed. And I think going forward, we would hope in the second half of the T-Cities project that we continue to see the further investment in projects which are equally successful and equally impressive with regards to the jobs it will create going forward. And I like to see that being noted and going forward with regards to the projects which are being reshaped. Because I think that is vitally important, as I said, for the region. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the comment, councillor. Maybe just a reminder, if my interest could be noted as a board member as well. I'm sure we'll be pro forma, but thanks very much. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Just so that, I'm aware of the issue that councillor Crichton raised, because it was something that was raised at West End Community Council. I should say councillor Crichton's logging out and logging back in again. I'm not sure if it's the gremlins of this particular system or whatever. But anyway, just so that Mr. Presswood is aware of what the issue is. No, it wasn't about funding through the T-Cities deal. We're aware of what it can be spent on. The issue really was that the area at the north end of the Tethnpol is undeveloped and has been for years. Now, we've seen progress, obviously. The T-Cities Innovation Hub is largely complete and an impressive building. And that's a new development. But the area to the north end is still underdeveloped. And a member of the public at the West End Community Council recently said, "It's a crying shame that in an area that lacks playparks, that there couldn't be a playpark there." The question that councillor Crichton and indeed I have is, given that the Tethnpol is earmarked for the biomedical cluster, can we have an assurance that that part of the site will be utilised in the near future and not sit underdeveloped for years when it could be used for another function? For example, a playpark. I'm not expecting Mr. Presswood to have to come back tonight, but just so when he replies, can he reply to both of us? And it would be greatly appreciated if we could have feedback on what the actual question was. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the clarity, Bailey McPherson. I'm sure Mr. Presswood will reply to both of you with that answer. Councillor Black, please.
Thanks, Convenor. The reshaping of projects is both an exciting opportunity but also a potential threat, I suppose, to some of the things that were decided years ago and which should have a transformational effect. I'm concerned, I know it's not in my ward, but I'm concerned about the marina. I think we have a huge asset, massively expensive piece of infrastructure to create, which has not been used its full potential and which I think potentially could create a whole lot of jobs and really fulfil the remit of economic development and job creation. And I worry that the people who make the decision about reshaping things will not have sufficient information, sufficient research at hand to know what the full potential of reopening the dock would be, but also the costs. So is there any reassurance available about the way that that will be considered?
Thank you, councillor Black. Mr. Presswood?
Many thanks, that councillor Black. And I think it's helpful that you've identified one of the projects which is under review as a result of the reshaping of the deal process. I think it's important, as you emphasised, to recognise that many of these projects were initially thought of almost 10 years ago now, and then the deal process was announced a couple of years after that. The reality was, many of them were conceptual with comparative limited development works and no planning consensus et cetera in place prior to that. We have carried, we are in the process of carrying out a review of the marina project. I think there is a very limited budget allocation within the overall deal process. And our understanding is that the costs now of developing the marina and particularly replacing the dock gate are very, very considerable. So I think that will be one that we're looking at very carefully to consider whether or not it is still feasible or whether the money should be reallocated to another project within the tourism area.
Thank you, Mr. Presswood. I'm sure maybe reassuring for councillor Black that people with expertise in that area and familiarity with it are looking at it. Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions. So I'll just confirm with Veronica that was the last item?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks very much. So with that report noted, that is the end of the Fair Work in Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Committee agree for the deputation?
I see agreement. So Mike, if you have seven minutes at the microphone, if you wish to take up the place over there and adjust it a suit. Okay, thanks.
Convenor and councillors, thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. I am Mike Whitehead, formerly a convener of the Dundee Nablus Twinning Association and currently treasurer. And it's good to know that some of you are members. I'd invite you all to consider joining as a member. We'd welcome you. As a member of DNTA, I've been privileged to visit our amazing twin city of Nablus many times. During those visits, we have conveyed greetings from the Lord Provost of Dundee to the mayor of Nablus and brought home their responses. Because of current circumstances, our last visit to Nablus was in November 2022, when a delegation from DNTA joined with a Dundee Trades Union delegation, making 14 people. And I'm pleased that councillor Shears was one of them that was there. And we can all attest to the amazing nature of Nablus. We hope to visit again as soon as it's reasonably safe. Our welcome in Nablus has been universally positive from all the communities there, including Muslims, Christians and Samaritans. Sadly, the people of Nablus have many unwelcome visitors because they live under a vicious military occupation since 1967, 58 years. The United Nations has documented 85 deaths and over 1,700 casualties in the Nablus region over the past 18 months, all as a result of the military occupation. That's 85 deaths and over 1,700 casualties, quite a lot. Here's an extract from a UN report describing one such incident. On the 27th of May this year, Israeli forces shot and killed one Palestinian man and injured 24 others during a raid in Nablus City, where Palestinians threw stones and burnt tyres and Israeli forces shot live ammunition. According to local sources, the man was shot outside his shop. He was not involved in the confrontations. The incident took place within the context of concurrent raids by Israeli forces into money exchange shops and gold businesses throughout the West Bank, including Nablus, Janine, Tubas and Kalkilio gonrets. These are frequent occurrences. They're disturbing for all Palestinians. They disrupt life and they destroy families. As the occupying power, Israel has the responsibility to protect civilians within the occupied territories. Instead, Israel protects Jewish settlers who've been involved in numerous violent attacks against Palestinians. And Israel demolishes properties in and around Nablus, citing a variety of pretexts. And this violence, of course, is nothing new. You will know that our twinning started in 1918 after a group of Israeli terrorists attacked several West Bank mayors, including the mayor of Nablus, Basam Shakar. They booby-trapped his car. He lost both his legs and he came to Britain for treatment. The twinning decision by City of Dundee District Council was taken 45 years ago and has been historic. Our friends in Nablus continue to die, to be injured and to suffer under occupation. The United Nations Special Committee on Palestine has recently described growing evidence of genocide in Gaza and an apartheid system in the West Bank. And we've seen that when we visit in Nablus. As you will realise, providing council services for a city under military occupation presents significant challenges. I hope you can build ever stronger bridges to support the Nablus municipality, the mayor and the councillors of Nablus who work to care and provide for the people of Nablus. As a twinning association, we don't take a party political stance, but we do demand universal human rights. We want to see peace in the region for everyone. You have a busy agenda tonight, so I could say a lot more, but I think it's sufficient to thank you for your continuing support for Nablus, including your 2021 recognition of the state of Palestine, which of course is salient at the very moment. And basically to encourage you to do all you can to help the people of Nablus, our friends there, in their time of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. You just want to stay aside and see if any questions from members? No, thanks very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
In their time of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. You just want to stay aside and see if any questions from members? Moving on, I'll go to councillor Skullin. At the podium. Is that okay? Yeah, okay.
Thank you for letting me stand up here. I find it a lot easier to talk to you all like this. So thank you for letting me bring this motion forward to council. I go to the Palestine demonstration in the city square on a Saturday whenever I can, and I try to go every week. I wave my Palestine flag and I shout as loud as I can, but it seems to be so futile when the world stands back and watches the genocide happen in real time. After speaking to Mary, who's the secretary of the DNTA, and hearing the stark statistics coming from our twin city, I said I'd try and bring a motion to council. Thank you to Mike for speaking today. My motion is that council condemns the increasing attacks on our twin city of Nablus at the hands of the IDF and adds to the calls of a wider ceasefire in Gaza and all of Palestine. The UK recognising Palestine as a state is a step forward, but there is so much more we should be doing. As part of this motion, I ask that council calls for a ceasefire in Gaza and for negotiated lasting peace agreement to be reached in order to bring lasting peace and stability to our twin city of Nablus. As mentioned already by Mike and will no doubt be mentioned again, our city is so proud of the twinning with Nablus, with many visits happening over the last 40-plus years. We must call for peace in Nablus and all of Palestine. Our bond with our Palestinian brothers and sisters is a strong bond. And Dundee is a city that has been at the forefront of some amazing humanitarian relief efforts and has welcomed refugees for many years, a fact that makes me so proud of our wee city. Council also condemns the increasing number of attacks by the Israeli Defence Force, the displacement of people and the loss of civilian lives. Too many innocent people are losing their lives all over the state of Palestine at the hands of the IDF. One life lost is one too many. We must add to the ever-growing calls of condemnation and ask our government to step up and call out an out-of-control Israeli government for their illegal actions in Palestine. When we said never again, that meant never again for anyone. This is a genocide that we are watching on our phones at home in real time. We as a council cannot sit on our hands and continue to watch this happening without asking our government and leaders to do whatever they can to stop this genocide. Council also calls for access to Gaza for aid workers to distribute aid safely to further prevent famine. We all know the current aid system is not working with very little aid getting into aid stations and aid stations becoming shooting galleries and target practice for the IDF. Gazans have no homes. They have no food or water. This isn't war, it's genocide. Doctors and aid workers are being stopped from bringing in baby formula to help starving babies. I don't want to live in a world where those actions are not challenged and leaders stand by and let it happen. I would therefore ask that council instructs the chief executive to write to the foreign secretary and ask him to write his really counterparts. and ask him to write to his Israeli counterparts condemning these attacks. We cannot as humans let this genocide of an entire people be the legacy we leave for our children. Where does this leave us? Where is the humanity if we let these disgusting acts continue? I move this motion.
Thanks very much, Wendy. Absolutely. I think we all feel exactly the same as yourself with regards to the, as Mike touched upon, the genocide that's happening in Palestine at this particular time. It's incomprehensible what we actually imagine was actually happening there and how we can feel every time we see it on the news. The young, the children, the older folk passing, getting murdered and what they're actually happening there. It's heartbreaking. I see councillor Shears, you've got a second? You want to go to the podium as well? Yeah.
Thank you. And as Mike said there, and I've had the great joy of visiting Nablus, our twin city. And so what I'd like to do is to speak about my experiences there. And because it doesn't seem like any of us will be able to visit for a while. And Nablus is a city that shines brightly in the face of the occupation and nothing shines brighter than the people that live there. As the saying goes, the people that have the least will always give you half and Nablus does embody that spirit. When you visit the city, the generosity, hospitality and warmth shown by the people there despite the constant reminders that they live under a military rule currently led by a far right hateful regime. But despite the love and warmth shown to us by the people of Nablus, it comes with a dark side. The hospitality in the face of occupation is desensitisation. When in Nablus, the sounds of gunfire and drones is a near constant. It's something that us as a delegation immediately noticed that something that the people of Nablus just accept as a part of life. The sound of occupation is so constant that when our delegation moved on to Ramallah for meetings with the Palestinian trade unions, I found it hard to sleep because the silence was so loud without the constant gunfire and the buzz of drones. And perhaps the most striking, and it's certainly the most memorable example I've saw of this desensitisation, was on a visit to a girls' football team preparing for an international tournament in Norway, where Nablus also has a twin city. When we were there having a kickabout, there was a drone flying above us the whole time. And us on the visit, we were looking up, watching it, disconcerted, nervous. And this team of young girls totally nonplussed by it as children so used to military hardware flying over their heads when they're playing a game of football that they don't take a second look. And we also spent a lot of time with the Nablus Fire Department, which is a fire department with incredible links to our city. And I'm sure we all remember the campaign by the F B U that sent one fire engine to Nablus and driven all across Europe and Asia to get there, such as the commitment in this city to the people of Nablus and another which is still disgracefully being held in national port by the Israeli authorities. And that's despite the F B U getting the U K government to challenge them. The Israelis will not let them have it. Now, one of the most shocking things about moving these engines over is that a condition that they need to get into Palestine is they need to be retrofitted to a left hand drive. And the reason that the Israeli government demands this is the fixed guns at checkpoints are aimed at the drivers for the left hand drive vehicle. Every single firefighter we spoke to could tell the stories of being denied access to an emergency situation by occupying Israeli forces. Several had bullet wound scars from being shot at while attempting to save lives. When Dundee twinned in Nablus in nineteen eighty, the first U K city to twin with a West Bank city, we took on responsibility to Nablus. It's a responsibility this council has inherited and every council following will continue to inherit. I'd like to pay tribute to the Dundee Nablus Twinning Association for their decades of work of bringing Palestinian culture to the people of Dundee. And the last two years, their vigils calling for an end to the brutality in Gaza in the city square on a Saturday. This council must remain steadfast in its commitment to the twinning agreement with Nablus despite international pressure. I'm sure all the members will remember a couple of months ago when we got about four thousand emails in a night demanding a Palestinian flag be taken down from the cared hall. It's done that for forty five years. It's not going anytime soon. And these emails weren't from Dundee citizens. The majority of them were from the U S, egged on by a misinformed hateful online campaign with the aim of erasing everything Palestinian. And people will say to us, why discuss this at city council? What's it to do with Dundee? But Dundee is a city with a radical history. A city that's always supported those who struggle for a better life. Work, pre-strikes, suffragism, abolition, where there's injustice, Dundee has always stood against it. The twinning agreement with Nablus was Dundee shouting loudly on an international stage and something that we should be immensely proud of. It's in our D N A and a city to stand up for injustice. And when I spoke to people in Nablus and asked what we could do, everyone had different answers apart from one answer which was consistent. They tell us, do not stop speaking about us. Don't forget us. It's our responsibility as a twin city to do that. And the people of Nablus knows what happened in this city. They hear what goes on and they're just as proud of the twinship as we are. The whole world has sat back and has allowed Benjamin Netanyahu to carry out the genocide. The U M have confirmed this is a genocide. It's an emboldened regime that will not stop at Gaza. They've already confirmed plans to colonise and annex the West Bank and the world has been silent. Dundee's a tiny voice in the world, but it's a voice that needs to be loud and we certainly can't be silent when our twin city is under an existential threat. I ask council to support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Shears. And again, very helpful. I think I don't think the city will break its agreement with Nablus for certainty. I've recently written to the mayor, invited him. If he gets the opportunity, all down to criteria to come to the city and the next opportunity in the Nablus Association, I really welcome that as well. So I think it's a and it's just to show our commitment to Nablus itself. I see councillor Creighton, you want to make a comment?
Yep, I hope everyone at committee can hear me now, despite the technical issues earlier on. And just on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group, I'd like to thank Mike for his deputation. And obviously he highlighted various serious issues also in the West Bank as well as of course Gaza. And our group supports the motion before us tonight. And our group strongly believes that an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and for negotiated lasting a peace agreement is vital to stop the terrible loss of Palestinian life. As is the release of the remaining Israeli hostages now being kept in captivity for nearly two years. It's just absolutely horrendous. As the motion states, access to Gaza for aid workers to distribute aid safely to prevent further famine is absolutely vital. As councillor Shear said, some will say that the horrendous situation in Gaza is out with the remit of the city council. That of course would be right, but it is vital that the whole civic society across Scotland and the U K expresses its outrage at this humanitarian tragedy in Gaza. A lot of these citizens are not even being treated as people and we feel extremely strongly about this. We are judged by our actions and I took pride in the fact that my party leader, Ed Davey, boycotted the Trump state banquet over Gaza and it sends a very strong signal. So let's send a clear and unequivocal message tonight as a city council expressing our outrage at the humanitarian crisis in Gaza and the failure of the U S administration to put the necessary pressure on the Israeli government to stop the bombardment of innocent civilian life.
Thank you, councillor Creighton. Bill O'Reilly, please.
Thank you, convener. Can I say to Mike, I remember it well because it was on the evening of the twenty seventh of November in nineteen eighty. As a member of Dundee District Council's Labour administration, which of course was forty five years ago, I clearly recall our feelings of hope, voting in support of our successful motion to twin with Nablus. This decision was taken in the face of fierce opposition, but we believed that an active relationship was vitally important, not only to support the people of Nablus, but also to contribute towards achieving a two state solution. The twinning has also played a part in raising awareness here in Dundee and the Twinning Association has been strong. And today we are actually aware of the increasing dangers to the people of Nablus and the dire and horrifying situation in Gaza. I think it's with great sadness, however, that I see how events have been unfolding. And I don't think I could have believed that all these years ago, that today we would be faced with the horrors we now are witnessing, where the prospects of a two state solution are as fragile as ever. However, though not solving the problem, the statement by the U K government yesterday gives a glimmer of hope at this very dark time. And I believe, as I did in nineteen eighty, that the people speaking out will not only support our friends in Nablus, but also add support to the process towards a just, secure and lasting peace for all the people and the nations in the region. In this motion tonight, we are again speaking out. I hope everybody hears and I trust the motion will be agreed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill O'Reilly. Can I go to councillor Anderson, who has an amendment as well?
I was wondering if you could put the amendment on the screen and then we can take it down and walk to the platform to speak. The amendment has been discussed with the Labour Group and agreed. And so it's simply to instruct the chief executive to write to the prime minister to ask him to acknowledge the U N Commission of Inquiry report that declares Israel has committed genocide in Gaza, calls on his government to immediately halt all arms sales to the state of Israel and to impose economic and cultural sanctions on the state of Israel. So could you take the amendment down?
Can we take the amendment down, please?
I want to start by thanking Mike for reminding us of our shared responsibilities for our twin city and speaking so powerfully. And I also want to thank the Labour Party for bringing this motion. As you can see, there's huge agreement round the room. Yesterday, Sir Keir finally did the right thing, finally righting the wrong of the Balfour Declaration of nineteen seventeen. Over a hundred years ago, the Balfour Declaration stated that the United Kingdom Parliament, and I quote, favoured the establishment in Palestine of a national home for the Jewish people, whilst only referring in passing to not prejudicing the religious rights of the existing non-Jewish communities in Palestine, who made up ninety four percent of the population at the time. Today, our first minister met with Husam Zomwot, the head of the Palestinian Mission in the U K to celebrate the U K recognition of the state of Palestine. Some of you may have heard Husam explain to Laura Kunzberg at the weekend that Palestine has always existed. It existed before the Balfour Declaration. It existed before the state of Israel. So this very long awaited recognition of the inalienable rights of the Palestinian people to self determination is very welcomed and it finally brings the U K government into alignment with over a hundred and fifty other countries. Coming to our amendment today, we fully support and welcome the motion from our colleagues. Our F M called for the recognition of the state of Palestine on the third of September and this very council called for the recognition of the state of Palestine back in April twenty twenty one, as has been referred to. The purpose of our amendment is simply to strengthen the motion and call for acknowledgement of the U N Commission, which found Israel guilty of genocide within the occupied Palestinian territories since the Hamas attacks on seventh October twenty twenty three. The crime of genocide is a legally defined term under the Rome Statute and the Genocide Convention. It's not a rhetorical flourish or a term used lightly. The crime of genocide covers acts committed with the intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnic, racial or religious group through one of five means. One, killing members of that group. Two, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of that group. Three, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical description. Four, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group. Five, forcibly transferring children of the group to another group. Genocide was evidenced by this independent international commission on all four counts of the five. All of the four counts were found to be guilty in genocide. The report details that from the seventh of October twenty twenty three to thirty first July this year, sixty thousand one hundred and ninety nine Palestinians have been killed. These are the bodies that can be documented, not the people who are still under the rubble, but the numbers will be much higher. Eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty were children, nine thousand seven hundred and thirty five were women. Overall, women and children account for forty six percent of the Palestinians killed. The percentage of women children killed increased to sixty percent of fatalities when Israeli attacks intensified in March this year. And in some specific attacks, one hundred percent of the fatalities were women and children. Eighty three percent of all those killed in Palestine to date have been civilians. The life expectancy in Gaza decreased from seventy five years before the seventh of October to forty years within the first twelve months of the Israeli attacks. That's a staggering statistic. In June twenty twenty four, the Commissioner General of UNRWA stated that ten children lost one or both legs in the war every day. Gaza is now home to the largest cohort of child amputees in modern history. And every one of those children who survive will need between eight to twelve surgeries before they reach adulthood. These numbers are hard to comprehend, so I'll try and translate the scale and intensity of what we are talking about. Gaza is six times the size of Dundee, but it has two point five density in population. So Gaza has six thousand three hundred people per square kilometre while Dundee has two thousand four hundred and seventy seven. So imagine six Dundees clustered together with two and a half times more people in each kilometre. And then imagine Israel dropping more bombs in one week on that area and that number of people than the U S A dropped on Afghanistan in one year. Palestinians have been killed in their homes, on evacuation routes, in displacement camps, in so called safe areas, in schools and in hospitals. One thousand three hundred and seventy three were killed while seeking food. One thousand four hundred healthcare workers were killed while providing healthcare. Along with four hundred and eight aid workers and three hundred and thirty three unwell team leaders, a hundred and seventy journalists have been killed. And one thousand five hundred embryos in an I V F clinic were targeted by the I D F who destroyed the embryos. This is clear catalogued evidence of genocide. And this in turn now makes every state which enables this action to continue to be complicit in genocide. The Scottish government have taken steps to ensure that all arms sales and investments do not support the state of Israel and will comply with international law to ensure we in Scotland are not complicit with genocide. So our motion calls on the U K government to do the same immediately. They must acknowledge this report and now impose economic and cultural sanctions on Israel. We must also ensure pressure is applied to ensure that illegal incursions into the West Bank cease. Israel's finance minister recently called for the creation of one thousand new homes, illegal settlements in the West Bank to, I quote, bury the idea of a Palestinian state. And in the first six months of this year, a hundred and forty nine Palestinians have been killed by Israeli settlers and soldiers, with many being taken hostage. Hamza Youssef very powerfully said that Gaza is the cemetery upon which our collective humanity has died. Let us now recover our collective humanity. And in honour of all those who have been killed, wounded and traumatised by this genocide, I would like you all now to stand and observe one minute's silence. I would like you all now to stand and observe one minute's silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Tolland, your second day on staff.
Did you hear me okay? Yeah, brilliant. I would like to thank councillor Scullin and councillor Shears for bringing this motion and councillor Anderson for bringing the amendment as well. I want to start by addressing the part of our amendment which is to call for the release of all Palestinian and Israeli hostages. Currently, we have forty-eight Israeli hostages. But actually also what we have is up to ten thousand Palestinian people languishing in an Israeli prison. Every year, there is five hundred to seven hundred children languishing in Israeli prisons, some of them as young as twelve years old. So when we talk about hostages and prisoners, we need to call for the release of all to make sure that all families are reunited and feel safe. I want to carry on a little bit though and recognise that I'm glad that the UN has recognised the genocide. But it feels very late. It comes after almost two years of this attempt to try, we had the ECCR in January twenty twenty-four saying that there was all probability a genocide and nothing really came of that. I want to thank the previous First Minister, Hamza Yousaf, as well because he was one of the first Western leaders to call this out for being a genocide and call it out for being ethnic cleansing, I think as early as January twenty twenty-four. And I want to bring this wider and almost back to Dundee as well. Because I think it's worthwhile understanding what the Israeli government is. When the Israeli government came to power in twenty twenty-two, the Israeli newspaper said that it was one of the most extreme right-wing coalitions that the Israeli history had ever seen. So what we're dealing with is an extreme right-wing Israeli government. In June this year, the UK has sanctioned two Israeli ministers for repeated incitement of violence against Palestinian communities in the occupied West Bank. What we have is a situation where incitement to violence against the Palestinian people has unfortunately become normalised. I think that had we taken a genocide seriously a bit more recently or a bit sooner after it began in October twenty twenty-three, we may have managed to stop many murders and many deaths. But I think importantly as well, I've always seen the Israeli situation and the genocide on Gaza as almost an international test case for where our human rights lay. Because if we allowed this, and this has been said by many people, if we continue to allow this, we have been allowing this, then what we do is we see a stripping of human rights across the globe. I'm going to mention Saturday and last Saturday's events here in Dundee. And I want to thank all the councillors that came to the counter rallies in Llanthorn in the Alloa Terrace accommodation, where people gathered outside in an anti-immigration, quite angry anti-immigration rant against those people who are sitting in Alloa Terrace, those refugees. And why do I mention that? Well, we talk about bringing it to Dundee. The issue that we now have is that Israel as a test case has allowed a further dehumanisation of all vulnerable people across the globe. These struggles are not disconnected. This is part of a shift to the extreme right that we are seeing across the globe and it's now here in Dundee. This dehumanisation that's occurring, that has occurred against the Palestinian people and are now occurring against a refugee population fuelled by people like Donald Trump and Elon Musk and Netanyahu is a real problem for our survival as a humanitarian society. Please support the amendment. I think we've got that anyway.
Thank you again for your contribution this evening. I think it's even more pertinent that we listen to councillor Right now. I will knock now. So over to yourself.
Thank you. I'll try not to take up too much more of everybody's time. Thank you to Mike from DNTU and all the work that you do in the city. You know, you're volunteering. You've for decades done a huge amount of work, so thank you. Thank you to councillor Stellian and Shears for bringing forward the motion and the opportunity to discuss it in the chamber. I think I'll just share with you a little bit of my personal experience. As many of you know, I'm a Scottish Palestinian. My mum is Scottish. And she fell madly in love with my dad, head over heels, who is Palestinian. And they met when he was visiting my uncle in nineteen eighty-two, who was at the University of Dundee. In my opinion, I think I'm pretty blessed to have the mix of the two best heritages, Scottish and Palestinian. Scotland's my home and Gaza in Palestine is my second home, where I used to visit every year, spending all of our summer in our house in Derabala with all of my siblings. There was eight of us in total, so it was a mad house, but it was lots of fun. I'm wondering if anyone's ever visited Dulles in Palestine? Nope. So I haven't either, because that's where my grandparents grew up, a small rural village. But nobody in this chamber will have visited Dulles because it doesn't exist anymore. Sadly and regrettably, my grandparents fled Dulles to Gaza when Israel forcibly depopulated four hundred towns and villages, either in nineteen forty-seven, before the creation of Israel, or nineteen forty-eight, after the creation of Israel. So fast forward seventy-six years, which brings us to today. Today, the absolute horror of today. I find it really hard to speak sometimes about this anymore. The homeland of my dad, which is connected to me through genetics and blood and heritage and love and family and friends and neighbours, is being erased, starved, obliterated. And we're generally at a point in history where a land and its people will no longer exist. My existence as a Scottish Palestinian is a form of resistance because it's very openly said, Israel, America and other countries, that they know that Gaza and Palestine will be taken. And we're in the process of witnessing the erasure of Palestine. Gaza City, Rafah are gone. So many dead, but we're more than just numbers, which includes my dad's cousin, who went to get flour for his family and was ran over by a tank and died. The genocide is live-streamed. I've seen so much that I never thought I would see only in a horror film. Rows of children dead that look like they're asleep. People being burnt alive, trying to escape. Pregnant women with no heads or limbs and families trying to escape only to be minutes later under the rubble. This genocide is a choice. And while Palestinian children are starved and shot at gunpoint, at point-blank waiting designated food queues that are deemed safe zones, a few miles away, other kids play, swim and eat in restaurants. Our twin in with Nablus isn't just symbolic. We have a responsibility to bear witness to their suffering, to the illegal occupation, to the settler violence and colonial abuse that they endure. My sister Reham and her husband are both doctors and they live in the West Bank in Ramallah. She tells me that work is almost unpaid now. Their water, electricity and food is all controlled by Israel and there is no safety. Most of the roads have military checkpoints, which are manned by soldiers or settlers. Many citizens in the West Bank are being killed. And she can't wait for an opportunity to get rid of, to get out of this big prison and have the opportunity to raise her kids in a safe environment. Sadly, I can't help her. I receive many messages every day from people asking me to save them. Strangers in Palestine send me their medical records and beg me to help their kids. They're so desperate to be saved and to survive and to feed their children and to give their children life. Parents in Gaza and Palestine love their children no less than we love ours. And many children in Gaza have said that they're praying to die so they can play in heaven. I can't help them, but governments can. Therefore, I call on every world leader, any person with a platform, anyone who could speak out about what is happening, what we are witnessing day in, day out, especially the UK government. I'll not stand here grateful that you finally acknowledged our existence, who is the colonial state that gave us away in the first place. But I will say that they need to take more action. They need to stop the sales of arms. They need to boycott and they need to sanction Israel. I really appreciate you all taking this time today to discuss this and to listen to me with some patience. As you can see, it's deeply personal to me, but it is also a great privilege and opportunity for me to speak in the chambers of Dundee City Council to my colleagues. And my family in Gaza will tell me tonight that they appreciated every single one of you listening and for every single one of you that spoke. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Nadia, and very, very emotive. Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks, convenor. I would say, and I'm sure we would all agree, that everyone has spoken extremely eloquently tonight. The reason I've come in, because obviously there have been quite a number of speakers, but I just want to make clear, we weren't aware of the amendment prior to the meeting, but we're happy to support the motion as amended. The content of the amendment conforms with our own party policy and what our party leadership has been repeatedly raising, along with others in the House of Commons and indeed in other places. I'm grateful to Mike for his deputation tonight, partly because as well, he raises issues in the West Bank because the tragedy that is facing the Palestinian people is not just in Gaza, but in the West Bank as well. The US administration frankly is complicit in all this in terms of not reining in. And they are the only ones that can effectively rein in this Israeli regime. And it is vital that we do not see the burying of the two-state solution. The motion as amended is stronger for the amendment, convenor. And for that reason, we are happy on a cross-party basis to support the motion as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. And I think I would say everyone, their contributions are really welcome this evening. I think I've been to many committees and this is one where really touches the soul. I think everyone feels this evening is really quite sensitive and the delicate nature. And I thank Mike for coming along this evening from the Nalbus Association. I think that's really important to actually have that conversation. So can I just take the motion and amendment as agreed? I see it's cross-party agreement, so thank you very much. And on that, can we maybe have a ten-minute recess, please? Thank you. So we come back at ten past seven. Thank you. Not yet, mate. Deputing here. To take orders, Bill. Okay, that's everyone back. Can we now move on to the next item on the agenda? Willie, please.
Okay, thanks very much, convenor. That takes you on to item three, Olympia report. You asked for your recommendations.
This report presents the report from Burness Paul, the solicitors regarding the closure of the Olympia swimming pool in leisure centre in 2024, all in 6.1 million of capital investment by the city council. Key questions were set out in the investigation and the issues were to contribute to the closure and to the length of the actual closure itself. The report findings included the works required to the flume pipe work and support were not reasonably foreseeable. Factors including temporary measures have been seen since the best balance of minimizing occupational risk while a permanent solution was found and the COVID-19 pandemic led to the recommendations of environmental health regarding safety barriers at the diveboards not being actioned. The dosing system did not operate as expected because new equipment took time to bear in. It could only be tested in a live scenario and due to the highly complex and interrelated nature of the pool systems. The original scope of the capital works was comprehensive. Additional works were brought forward in light of the opportunity to undertake them while the Olympia was actually closed to avoid future disruptions. And the working relationship with DCC and L N C D did not prolong the project. Since the reopening, council officers and L N C D staff have undertaken monitoring of the performance of facility. All systems, including flumes and dosing, are functioning and as intended. Safety barriers now meet environmental health standards. A strategic maintenance programme is in place with daily cleaning monitor to ensure high standards. Annual closures are scheduled for a deep clean at the minor and with the communication strategy in place to ensure staff and customers are informed in advance. And the positivity is included in that as the attendance at Olympia is covered with full visits and overall facility usage exceeding expectations and membership growth surpassing pre-pandemic levels, and the committee is asked to approve the recommendations. I can see, Billy, who's first now? Say, let me speak to the woman. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, convenor. The report is to be welcomed and I hope that we can all agree this should draw a bit of a line under. And let's hope it will draw a line under the issues, reputational as well as very expensive issues that have permeated around the Olympia for a very significant period of time. What I think is absolutely vital now is that we have confidence and that we are able to speak up our swim and leisure facility at Olympia and ensure that it functions, as you alluded to there, well into the future with not none of the problems that it has seen of over the period of really the last five years. I did have some concerns, I have to say, just in the past week about the fact that the Rapid River attraction, including the Bubble Bed, has been out of action, I believe, since the 19th of August. And this is due to damage at the protective gate, grate rather, that is required. Now, I did ask the head of design and property services if this should not have been picked up as part of the capital works. And he's assured me that there were, at that time, there had been no indication of a deteriorating performance of this when the capital project was scoped. And I think we can all accept that. However, the question I've really got tonight, just to give us assurances that we're not going to have continual issues going forward. I remember saying at the scrutiny committee when we waited through hundreds of pages of evidence over the Olympia situation some time ago, back in, I think, 2022, that the annual maintenance programme, which should never have been dumped when the old Olympia closed and the new Olympia opened 15 or so years ago, but the annual maintenance programme is now to take place. And an annual closure is a sensible thing. So my question, to get back to the current issues around the great, the Rapid River function, is will issues like this be picked up regularly as part of the annual maintenance programme to ensure that we don't have problems like this? And we can sell what is actually an excellent leisure facility as always being fully available to the public? Thank you.
That's your question. I'll put it to Mr Martin, please.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. So yeah, I can confirm that anything that's recognised and can wait till an annual planned closure will be done in that manner and materials ordered and planned accordingly. Obviously, things will happen from time to time that are unforeseen. And what we will be doing is working in conjunction with leisure and culture to minimise any impact. If there's temporary repairs that can be carried out and then it can wait for the planned closure, we'll do so. In this instance, that obviously wasn't the case and we'll look to react and get everything operational as quickly as possible.
Thanks for your answer. To answer your question, Billy McPherson?
It does indeed. It's perfectly fair and I'm grateful for the rapid response I had from said officer in relation to the ongoing issue. But as I say, a perfectly reasonable reply and hopefully we can all look forward to a much more robust Olympia going forward and none of the issues that we've seen in the past five years. Thank you, convenor.
Thank you. Billy Keenan, you have a comment?
Yeah, just to say, I thought the report and the questions that was asked answered them well. I suppose the issue that I did have was in relation to fasteners breaking, that were still breaking after we'd reopened the place. Given that that was an issue that hung around for 2013, when I read some of the health and safety reports previous meeting that were given at a scrutiny committee. I think the real issue is, hopefully, addresses the issue around the bad press that Olympia has been getting. And hopefully we'll be able to move on. I'm not sure it goes any way towards delivering the answers of why did we have to spend £6 million in the first place, the reputational damage to that council? I think it's been something that I'll take a bit of getting over.
Thank you very much for your comments. I think it's everyone's opportunity to promote this, what we have an excellent facility within the city. And I think it's still be welcome. We can actually do that and move on as both yourself and Billy McPherson has said. I see no further comments or questions. So we'll take this report as agreed. Thank you. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Takes you on to item four, Strategic Review of Leisure and Culture Dundee Reports Before E4 Agreement.
This report presents the strategic review of leisure and culture Dundee conducted by ECOS, an independent reviewer. In terms of the financial performance, the review found that L S D's total expenditure rose by £2.2 million from 2019 to 2024, which is driven by staff and property costs, while income declined by 4.1%, increasing resilience and reliance on the DCC funding. Significant operating deficits were noted at key venues, Central Library, Ice Arena, Olympia and McManus. There's been an increase in visitors to the various sports and leisure facilities by over 3% post-COVID. However, number of visitors to the city libraries was down by 36% compared to pre-pandemic levels. Cultural venues recorded 80% increase in visits compared to the pre-pandemic levels with McManus and Kethol recording highest rates of attendance. The report recommends revising of the service agreement to clarify expectations are aligned with city priorities. Other recommendations include developing a performance management framework, improving data systems, expanding fitness facilities, supporting alternative delivery models, example, community asset transfers, potential for workforce realignment to improve efficiency. It is also recommended the officer working group will prioritise actions and ensure alignment with strategic goals of the council. He's asked to note and approve the recommendations. I see no comments or questions, so. Oh, sorry. Just go over again. Oh, Billy McPherson, sorry.
Thanks indeed, convenor. I should say, the report in many respects is helpful, although I have one area of concern about it. As was the briefing last week, and I think Brian McLaren from ECOS gave a good presentation and overview of the report findings. And there were good contributions from officers both of leisure and culture Dundee and of the city council. And I should also mention, and I'm sure everyone who was on the briefing would agree, that the contribution on behalf of the leisure and culture board from David Dorward, who's a board member on behalf of the chair, was extremely useful and instructive in terms of ensuring, I think we have a pretty, a board in which we have, can have some confidence. And I think he made a very helpful number of comments and statements regarding the ECOS report. Just want to focus in on four things very briefly. One, I did raise at that and got some assurances from Mrs Dobie as a leisure and culture Dundee director about swimming participation, because I think we could be frankly making more use of our schools. I think it's all the more vital, given the closure of the Dundee Angus College Pool as well, that we maximise the facilities we have across the city to ensure that particularly learn swim, but other family swim is available to, and we make the most of the facilities that we actually have, both in our schools and our, and obviously our swim centres, including Olympia as well. There was a very good suggestion and some discussion about the possibility, which ECOS had raised, about the possibility of universal or citizen membership of leisure and culture. And I think that's something, something well worth exploring. I think we want to ensure that the whole of the citizens of Dundee feel part of the leisure and culture family. And I think maybe something of a rebrand around that would be, would be well worth considering. Lastly, I do want to talk about the area of concern that I have. Oh, I should say, my fourth thing was, my third thing rather, was the need for the service level agreement to be rewritten. But I think everybody knows that. It needs updating. I think everybody knows that. The area of concern is the comments of ECOS about their suggestions around the loss of posts, up to around 88 posts. And I think that is frankly a bit of a red flag. I think we would all have great concerns regarding that. And it's quite clear the leisure and culture Dundee board would have great concerns about that. It has a negative impact on staff morale. And I think it's really important that we ensure that we give a commitment to the staff who work so hard at leisure and culture Dundee in ensuring that we have a cultural and leisure offer to Dundee and the wider region that we can be proud of. Thank you, convenor.
Thank you. And I think the important part coming from the ECOS group was actually the working group is going to be traded between the council and leisure and culture, along with, as you touched upon there, Billy McPherson, the S L A update. I think that's really important. It's what, 2011? I think it was mentioned on the briefing. So I think we look forward to seeing what actions will be considered by the officer group once it's set up. And I'm sure that will come back to the committee next as soon as possible. Bailey Keenan, please.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. The report, I suppose the bit that's regrettable about the report is the number of jobs that that the report suggests could be a target. And that isn't helpful, I don't think, with the changes that are going on in leisure and culture to be suggesting that people would lose their job or otherwise at this time. Happy enough for a review to go ahead, and people that were on the briefing would have heard from David Dorward putting the issue on behalf of the chair, obviously suggested that the financial figures are much better in leisure and culture. It's this report, its figures are 18 months late, you know, so there has been considerable change there. Patronage is on the up in many areas. So we really need to have that figures refreshed. And I suppose if we come towards budget time, be useful for everybody in the chambers to have a real look at these figures. Because last year, the consultation was about things like UNESCO and Douglas Sports Centre and it's Douglas Sports Centre is in the best facilities that we've got by way of attendance. And UNESCO goes on about how much additional funding that brings to the city. So we had a potential for throwing the burden out with the bathwater and we kind of have that going forward. Really need to refresh the figures and bring them to committee so that everybody's aware of the figures that are there and what will be discussed moving forward with leisure and culture.
That's fair comment. I think it was noted on the briefing that they used the figures that were provided at that particular time for them. And I don't think we should all get basically hung up on what was actually in the detail of that with regards to jobs, etc., until we get the officer group set up and actually have the plan put in place and the actions to go forward and see what needs to be done. Well, bringing in the chief executive at this point for his comments.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks, Bailey Keenan. Just in regards to updated information, ECOS were commissioned to do a piece of work and ECOS were commissioned to do a piece of work. Unfortunately, the information that's now available for the prior financial year wasn't available during that time. But as mentioned on the call, there is an annual report that leisure and culture Dundee have produced. And I'm happy to circulate that to all members of the council and provide updated information once that's available for the financial year 2425. And if possible, provide an update on the current outturn in relation to financial year 2526, which hopefully members will find helpful.
Good. Thank you. Councilor Anakla, please.
Yeah, just a quick question. Obviously, the report shows such a huge portfolio that leisure and culture manage. And it's, you know, it is a testament to actually how much we offer citizens in the city. But I guess I was wondering, because the portfolios are big, one, do we have a marketing plan? And if we have a marketing plan, is it just one strategic overview of the plan? Or does each kind of cultural sector have then a smaller workable plan? I know it's such an operational question, but I'm just, you know, in some cases, numbers have increased and it could be obviously the good work that you're doing. So I'm just wondering, yeah, how it works in terms of a marketing brand strategy.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring in Mr. Dobie, please.
Thanks for the question. We've put a huge focus in marketing in the last year, which has made a real, real difference in terms of how people are viewing services and how they're accessing them. It tends at the moment to be focused in specific areas. So we put a lot of focus on the mills, which has paid off in terms of visitor numbers. We rebranded the sports side to Active Dundee and we did a whole summer programme, which combined all the different offer. So going forward, we'll continue to have that focus across all services with targeted ones that the ones that we really want to raise the profile of.
Thank you. You want to come back?
And I think that's really good. I don't know if we can see that, just there's so much just now on social media that people are looking at to get fit and to get healthier and the demographics and things. I know you mentioned high rocks, which is a big thing just now as well. I'm just wondering if there's a social media plan to engage, because people, I don't know, it's just me, but I buy anything that I'm like, they're so highly influenced from Instagram. That I'm just wondering if we have a presence there and if we're kind of working on it.
Potential new membership coming there, but Judy?
Yes, again, social media is critical in terms of what we do. So we do have a social media plan that's targeted at different areas. So the high rocks thing had a really high presence and it's translating into increased visitor numbers to the RPC.
I think I follow on from Bailey Keenan's comments again as well with regards to what's been done in the recent year or so since ECOS was started. So I think it's really important to take that on board and the figures that the chief exec will provide to everyone. Councilor Shears, please.
Thanks very much. It's a very big report, so the chances are I have missed it, I'm going through it. But could you tell me what engagement was done with the trade unions of the workforce when making this report?
Honestly, not quite sure if the trade unions were interviewed or not. I'll bring in the chief exec.
That's convenor. If I can pass to Mrs. Calder, who'll be able to advise of the consultation. But we may need to go back to ECOS just to confirm. They did give an update in the briefing, but I'm not sure of the exact detail to give to our shares.
Andrea, for the detail?
I'd need to look at the list to see if the trade unions were engaged with. But do you mean during the process or subsequently?
During the process of the report, and I'd assume if we approve the report tonight, the review would involve trade unions.
Judy, please.
Thanks for the question. We made sure that the trade unions were notified at the same time as we could notify staff that the report was about to come out, just as it goes live. And we work quite closely with the trade unions. So obviously, going forward, we will make sure that we include them in discussions.
Also, I think it was back to the officers and the officer working group and whatever come from that. So I think we'll take that on board as well. Councilor Black, please.
Thanks, convenor. One of the good things about the report is it sets out a number of positive ideas. And something we didn't really have last year when we were looking at closing things. And this year, we're looking at potential ideas, potential investments. I really like the idea of adding fitness facilities to the regional performance centre. Because that would open that up to the people in Switmartin who could make use of those facilities, but it would also be available to the whole city. And it might well bring in more members, more income. And I like the idea that we can develop some of our other facilities. We didn't have that last year. And so it's, it gives us a bit more optimism about the future. If we can see that there are good ideas and the possibility of investing in them and producing more business for leisure and culture.
Thanks very much for your comments. And I think, again, the officer will take that on board when they go to their working group, I'm sure. Councilor Anderson, please.
Thank you, convenor. I thought this was a very useful report with some very strong ideas. I thought it was a fatal flaw that having come up with a lot of good ideas and suggestions, they very specifically talked about 88.5 full-time equivalent job losses. Because that completely disorientates everybody who's looking at the positive ideas in this report. So I'm really hoping that leisure and culture, that the board that are set up to review this, look at this in a constructive and positive way. I think the idea of universal membership is a profoundly important one. I think it should shape all of our thinking. So if we're actually thinking about universal membership for everybody in Dundee, that in turn will help us think through the services that we should be designing and how they should be valued. So that's the best idea in this report and I just didn't want it that to get lost. And if we start with that as the core value, I think we can develop better services and not instead start at the end and say we've got to find the 88.54 job losses. That's completely the wrong way to look at this. So I'd really encourage people to hang on to that idea about universal membership, because it reshapes everything we think we're doing.
Thanks very much. And I think that's one of the items within the report which really caught everyone's attention. I think Billy McPherson touched upon it as well. I think the points we make are really down to this working group. It's really important the working group take on board everything that's been suggested. And we don't get hung up on particular things within the report, as I said, because it was an external body looking at the resources. And ultimately, LSC are about to deliver what the council want. And I think that's the important part. Councilor McQ, please.
I just want to say, and it's already been picked up, staff losses. Engagement with our trade union partners is really, really important. And I would really like an assurance from the officers working group that this will be done at a very early stage when they begin their work.
Thank you. And just to reiterate again, this was an external body and that's their opinion. And I think it's up to the working group. It works between leisure and culture and the council. And we look forward to what actions come out of that working group, which we brought back to the committee going forward. Thank you. Councilor Rome, please.
Thank you, Chair. I don't want to go on at length, but I just want to say that I thought that the information session was, that Bailey McPherson Ferto was extremely useful. I think that the report itself is extremely useful as well to have that benchmarking against similar organisations. And I think it's really helpful for members that aren't necessarily members of the leisure and culture board to know the kind of ideas that might be put into fruition, to know the kind of ideas the leisure and culture already had, to generate that growth. And to see the good progress that's been made in terms of more collegiate working between leisure and culture and the city council. And I think, as you said yourself, Chair, that there's a good sign to that going forward with the committee, with the working group that's going to be set up. So yeah, just like to welcome this report.
Thank you very much for your comments and much appreciated. Councilor Lynn, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words, because I was appointed to the board of leisure and culture Dundee under a year ago. I was still kind of finding my feet. And I guess the report was a bit of a shock. Especially the bit about the fact that we might be slightly overstaffed. But as David Dorward said on Friday, you know, the up-to-date position is an improvement. And I really welcome the opportunity in the next, whatever length of time that I'm on that board, to to take leisure and culture in Dundee forward, because these are the things that make life worth living. It's books, it's music, it's theatrical performances, it's swimming, it's running. All these things are wonderful and make life worth living for the people of Dundee. So my initial shock is kind of tempered by my optimism. I think that leisure and culture Dundee will go from strength to strength and I certainly intend to play my part in that.
Thanks. Thanks very much. And I hope that passes on to all the rest of the board members and keep that enthusiasm going forward. Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you. Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Take sure to item five, the report and standing orders. You'd ask to read the recommendations.
Thank you. Report presents a review of the council's standing orders and schemes of administration for financial regulations, tender procedures and delegation powers to officers. Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks, convenor. We largely welcome the content of this report and I pay tribute to the hard work of both democratic legal services and finance officers in pooling all this together. It's a substantial piece of work. And I think they've got the balance pretty right. There are a couple of areas where we're pleased to see the changes. The slight simplification of some of the committee names is definitely to be welcomed. We'd go a little bit further, but we'll not go there tonight. Secondly, having banged on about the level at which delegation on procurement of currently 500,000, having banged on about that repeatedly, we're pleased to see the reduction to 300,000. That's certainly to be welcomed and in the right direction. And the other areas around procurement, quite frankly, are very sensible. For example, the weekly lists concept of updating elected members in all areas of procurement, I think is a very good way forward. So what do we want to achieve? One, we want to achieve transparency with the public. And two, we want elected members to have confidence in the system. And I think the recommendations before us tonight helped miserably in that regard. There's nobody else wanting to come in at the moment. So will I just move on to the amendment?
Yes, please. Officers, put it up on the screen as well, please.
Yep, it's fairly straightforward. It looks a little bit cryptic, but it's fairly straightforward. You'll not understand what I'm talking about looking at that. But Mr. Many kindly provided the wording for what we are wanting to achieve. And with no disrespect to yourself, convenor, when the former councillor Alexander resigned as leader of the council, you emerged by magic because of a vote within the SNP group. And the rest of the council had no say in who the new leader of the administration was. Now, files that may, I don't think that's particularly democratic, even if you've got a majority administration. But certainly, if you move, as is very likely to be the case in a year and a half, if you move to a minority situation, which I suspect may well be the situation right across Scotland in May 2027. All things being equal, you know, polls change and all that. But the point I am basically saying is, it makes absolute sense that the leader of the council is elected in exactly the same way as conveners are. And at the moment, that's not actually the case. So it would be particularly ridiculous if you had a minority administration who really rely on the debate on the day to get their business through. And therefore, we are of the view that standing order 461 should be altered to, and all this does is it puts the election of the leader of the council on exactly the same footing as conveners, all other conveners. In other words, that the city council makes the final decision on that. So with that, I understand that councillor Duncan will second me, convenor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Billy McPherson, and for clarifying, because it was difficult to comprehend what you were writing there. I absolutely agree with you. I've got no issue with that at all. With that in mind, I'm quite happy to take the amendment as is. You don't need to come in, councillor Duncan, I don't think, do you?
No, no, no. If you're happy, I'm happy.
That's fine. Thanks very much. I don't see any other comments or questions. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to stop there. There's also another amendment by myself, which I'd like to bring forward, if that's okay. If officers can bring that to the screen. This is also quite straightforward as well, because I think it's about time we actually had a review of this with regards to the timings of meetings. And I think it's only right we do carry out a consultation on this with the particular parties mentioned within the motion I'm putting forward. And I think it's important, bearing in mind, we are trying to make the council more accessible. We're trying to make sure we are aligned with other local authorities across the country as well. So can I get a second or please? Oh, sorry, he's typing out. I thought he was going to speak. I see Billy Sawyer's a secondary amendment.
Given the hour, I will just do that formally, convenor.
Thank you very much. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, convenor. There are good arguments actually for having early evening meetings in terms of people who have day jobs and so on. But no one can stand in the way of a consultation. That's a perfectly reasonable request. So we have no problem with your amendment at all.
Thank you for your support. And I don't see any other comments or questions. Everyone's content, so we'll just take that as agreed. And we'll move forward to the consultation on this particular case. Thank you very much. Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Take sure to item six, member salaries. You'd ask to read the recommendations.
Comments or questions? I don't see any, so we'll just take that report as agreed. Sorry, sir. No, it's awesome. No, it's awesome. I'll see. I think so. Take that report as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Item seven is the budget strategy and financial outlook. You'd ask you the proposals.
Sorry, the report presents the medium-term financial projections and recommends a strategy to address the projected budget shortfall for 2627. Any questions, comments? I don't, I don't see any, so I'll take that report as agreed also. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. To meet then is capital expenditure monitoring. You'd ask you the recommendations.
Again, the committee is asked to note the report which shows the latest position regarding the council's capital plan 2530. I see councillor Duncan, you have a question?
Yeah, just a brief question around page 452. I see that the road maintenance partnership capital capital funding has been adjusted downwards by £77,000. Just wondering what the reason behind that is.
Can I bring in Mr. Thompson, please?
Thank you, convenor, and thank you, councillors, for the question. I can confirm that I don't have that level of detail at this moment. But I'm happy to circulate the answer around all elected members as soon as possible.
You very much.
Yeah, very good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Again, I don't see any further questions or comments, so we'll move on, please. Thank you, Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Item nine then is revenue monitoring report. You'd ask you the recommendations.
Again, the report provides the committee with analysis of the 2526 projected revenue out run. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, convenor. Your call last month, I expressed a little bit of concern that eight weeks into, that was the report up to the 31st of May. And eight weeks into the new financial year, we were projecting an overspend of £5 million, I think it was from memory at that time. It's a little bit also concerning to now read that yet by the 30th of June, in other words, the end of the first quarter, that projected overspend has already jumped to 6.8 million. And now Mr. Thompson very helpfully gave an indication as to, you know, the need for a little bit of a review around insuring. Because the point I was making was, how can a budget be correct if you have an overspend of that magnitude so soon into the new financial year? And I was just really wondering if officers could give an indication as to when they might give us some feedback on any amendments to the budget process that might be introduced that will avoid us in when we get into the 2627 financial year, having the same sort of situation so early in the financial year.
Thank you for your question. Mr. Thompson, please.
Thank you, convenor, and thank you, Bailey McPherson, for the question. So I could confirm as far as the current financial year is concerned, officers will be reviewing the current overspend in line with those actions outlined in paragraph 3.4 of the report. And we'll be able to provide members with an update in terms of the progress of implementing those items as part of future monitoring reports. In terms of moving forward, I could confirm that the process to review the council's budget requirement for 2627 is ongoing. It was outlined in the previous report on the financial outlook and part of that process will be to look at those items of spend in the current year, particularly those that are of a recurring nature and consider the inclusion of any relevant amounts within the budget proposals that are presented to members to agree in due course.
Thanks very much, Paul. Thanks very much, Paul. Is that your question, Billy McPherson?
It does. That was very helpful. It's the recurring thing. It's the things that pop up. So, you know, year after year, the same areas are overspent. And I think having that review is very, very helpful. And I'm grateful to Mr Thompson for his response. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I don't see any further questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed as well. Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Take short item 10, sourcing strategy and proposed tender award for pension administration services, your approval requested.
Quite straightforward. No questions or comments. So we'll take that one as agreed as well. Thank you very much. And that's city governance. Thank you. Collective groans there, I felt. Welcome to Neighbourhood Regeneration Housing and Estate Management. Veronica, if you could lead us off, please.
Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
I don't see any. Thank you, Veronica.
Item two, tenders received for Lindlathen Phase One proposed energy efficiency measures. This report is for approval.
Okay, it's been quite a while getting to where we are today. If you read the body of the report, I think this is a positive report for people in Lindlathen in these properties. So I will open it up to questions. I see no questions. Is this approved?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks very much. That's the business.